President.
Yeah. No, and I'm present. And I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we need to modify that, Brian?
Not, you don't need to modify the agenda, uh, can still goes right into the same topic of the file, you know, base process and timelines. But we'll add this document to the board book. We got it today.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, favorite.
Bye.
Got the unanimous. Moving on to. Don, you're up.
Okay, um, so we wanted to just kind of walk through the, um, very exciting part of the start in the design phase, you know?
Yeah.
Um, kind of work through the master plan, which we know, and so we wanted to kind of talk through the different groups that we have and kind of how they're involved in the design process. And starting at the school board, um, we will bring, uh, design updates, informational, uh, updates, and that will be periodic, probably monthly, um, and, uh, updates on budget and schedule, as you would imagine, answering the questions you have and just let you know where we're at in the process. I think during key, um, times, we'll have the architect come and present elevations or, um, you know, things like that that we'd like to present and get feedback on as well. We will involve the contractor, P and C. We've, we've put quite a few acronyms in here, so let me know if you, you need to explain any of them, I'll try to do as we go along, but update on the GMP, which is guaranteed maximum price. The way we do that is just after bidding, we will work to get to a GMP and we'll make sure we balance to our budget. So that's all part of updating you on our budgets. Budget decisions, as we work through the process, we always have this balancing act of, um, how do we balance our design to our budget? PE is value engineering, so we usually end up, um, you know, weighing different designs or different materials or things like that, that we would want to, uh, involve, involve the board on some of those decisions. Our goal is to get to towards the end of the project or some point in the project where we can consider, uh, wishlist items. We're tracking a pretty good list, you know, and that's typical, that we have a lot more, uh, items that we want to do than we have budget for, but we will work on prioritizing those with the district and hopefully get to a point where we can come in and go through those and kind of decide which wishlist items we'd like to, uh, approve and involve the board in that. And, um, one thing we've talked about with Brian is having, um, a member of the board on the design committee, and we'll talk a little bit more about the design committee there in a minute. Uh, we also have the bond oversight committee that you're very familiar with, they've already presented to you, they'll continue, uh, to present after their meetings. We have one coming up in a couple of weeks.
So you'll, you'll have a report from them in.
Yeah, so, um, in my experience, that's just a great committee to, um, give updates on schedule and budget, same thing, and kind of a nice conduit to community, and they'll bring us, I think we have about twenty people on that committee. Um, they'll bring us questions, things they're hearing, you know, coffee shop or whatever, and um, so next meeting, this will be our second one, they want to hear word about how the contingencies are going to be handled, and so we plan to, um, cover that in that meeting. Um, I'll be there, we'll have, um, P and C to talk about kind of how they manage that on their end. Uh, the design committee is, um, one that we are starting to, to put together, Brian's been working on that, it's going to be, uh, facilitated by our architect, Rick. Uh, be about ten fifteen people. What's that?
The only thing we have had is a tremendous response, uh, by people wanting to be on the team. I, I don't remember what Jacob said, the number of students, but I think it's going to be a lot bigger than ten fifteen.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, which we're going to talk about break being able to split up, split people up and they can manage it all, but, um.
So there's a lot of student involvement?
That is a lot of.
Lots of student involvement.
I'm excited about that.
Even community members, lots of community members coming to be on it. We're trying to, committees right now, like unfortunately, we're having to say no to people just because we can't have a few person committee. So we're trying to spread it around, like if you're already on the committee, we'll have someone else be on this other one. So I just wanted to, design committee will probably want to have.
Well, I wonder if you can break it up, like can you have like a student committee, like a, like a subcommittee, right? Like a student, because I, I just feel like student voice is really important, but they're going to feel like they have to defer to hierarchy and stuff, right? So it would be maybe nice if we had like a community of like a staff and then a student.
Yeah, a good idea, good point.
Yeah, trying to get all our schedules to, they kept to the challenge too, so that might be a good way to, you know, keep up work on that. Um, so things will, they'll review in that meeting, the floor plans, the general look of the building, um, safety and security, just a lot of the functionality of the building and the rooms, how the rooms are laid out, because um, in general, you know, a lot of the standard classrooms be the same, so it's really important how we, um, design that general classroom. And, um, as we've kind of talked about staff, students, community members and a board member, be the goal for that committee. And that's an advisory. Uh, time commitment on that is about two times a month through May. Uh, from now through May, because we are just really getting started on the design. I think summer is going to tail back a little bit and then, um, start back in September, the design. Uh, bond management team is the, uh, group that we've already, uh, established, we meet weekly, um, and that's Brian and Dale and Darla and Jacob, so we have, um, I think that's the core, Max, um, and, um, others, you know, as needed, um, and so that's really the core decision-making group on the, um, through the design process. So kind of everything funnels in one or another to the BMT. And, um, really, that's, that's needed just because there's a lot of decisions that need to be made, um, we're emailing throughout the week, confirming things and, um, at that meeting that really keeps the project moving along on schedule. Uh, and then additional groups as needed, we, one, would be honored, the past group, um, name is still in the works.
Better one than that.
Um, to, you know, really find ways to, um, honor the buildings that are going away as part of the project and items that can be salvaged and things like that. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about the, uh, state historic preservation process, which sort of ties into this a little bit. Any questions for me or either Brian on this process? The next page is, um, example of the design committee meetings for the schematic design, and just a reminder, the design is broken into three phases, we have a schematic design, which is about the first thirty percent of the design, then we have the, uh, design development phase, which is the next thirty percent, and the instruction documents, and the details, plans just get more and more as you go along. So we're kind of in this first phase of, um, the schematic design, and these are, uh, sign coming meetings going from kind of in February through the end of April. And anything else you'd add, Brian?
Um, not that I can make it, other than, I'm not sure, I'm not on the design committee. And that was intentional to be as authentic as we can to the process of, you know, involving every twenty five students, staff and community members. I, I imagine these days are a little flash, that's all.
Yeah, it'll get a little tricky in the summer, so we do try to keep, we obviously have to keep designing, but we, um, try to step that up where we still get feedback, because that would be a pretty key, you know, um, design development phase of the project, so, and I guess what I would add to this, and we get a little bit of this in the next schedule, but as we go along with each of those, um, phases, we'll have P and C give us a estimate. So it's a check-in, um, they, we'll get a set of documents, either digital or printed. Um, we'd love to get review and feedback to those documents, we usually sit down and do what they call a page turn session, where we just have the architect and the engineers come in and talk us through the plans and make comments, and we kind of consolidate all those comments, and so that's really where we're we want to give the team direction that they have in the next phase. Um, the next page says design schedule, this one here, um, is really, uh, it's designed, but it's also includes land use and construction, so I'll just kind of, um, quickly walk through this. It's similar to what you've seen before, but in a little different format. Um, master planning, we are, uh, complete with the, um, summer twenty twenty-five work is what we're working on now, and this is, um, as we look ahead to the first, really the major demolition, we have to make sure will the gas meters be effective, uh, be all the utilities that will be, um, affected, that we have planned ahead for that, so that's a lot of what we're doing this summer, um, electrical, mechanical, um, and, uh, data fiber, uh, things like that. Um, so that's a big push, and we'll see some, um, contractors on campus that are starting to look at, um, giving us proposals and bids and, um, start to see some work given done here this summer.
Yeah, they were run through to the, I don't know if it says what the summer projects are.
Yeah, summer projects, so we have, the fiber needs to be relocated, um, while we're doing that, we'll be, uh, roughing in for the oxygen and the modulars, because it's kind of along that same path, uh, we need to, um, put in a new boiler that will feed existing systems for here in the gym and, and kind of think through all that, and so we don't have the design done yet, but we're, we've got our designers working on it, we're also bringing on kind of a, a first phase of contractors for that, so a design-built contractor, um, to work on that for us for mechanical. Um, it also has to do with the air healing units in this, um, because their steam, we're taking the steam boiler away, so we need to convert, so things like that. The, where you're putting the boiler in? They're, uh, working on that now, um, trying to find a location for it that's, uh, fire-rated and things like that, and so, um, I don't know exactly yet, we were going through some options, but.
I assume that was going to be part of the.
Yeah, that's going to be part of the process, and what we're talking about today is also kind of, um, looking like as we're putting the work into this area, thinking about, um, really confirming what, what scope we want to do now and what maybe we would do later, kind of look through, like, for example, cooling in the gym, maybe we can't afford to do it now.
But the record showed Jacob Pence that we are considering.
Yeah, so, um, we just wanted to talk through all those kind of options, and having this, uh, design-built contractor for this, just this scope, um, because we still want to bid the main project.
Yeah, no.
Um, but, um, so P and C's out getting, um, multiple, um, kind of proposals for that. Um, and then, uh, like water lines, gas, gas relocation is part of this. And so I think those are the main.
But I think this here best schools and other schools.
Oh, okay, yeah, for new scopes, so we have, um, also engaged, uh, an architect to, um, just look at secure vest wheel for the middle school and the elementary school, and so we'll have some, um, plans and options to talk through with the district and the staff here soon on that. Um, we are, um, looking at some security, um, access control and camera work for the summer. So, um, we're doing everything we can to get, um, that work designed in in the summer, so we'll keep you posted on that, um.
Our check is for those that are originally implied.
Yes, yeah, smaller firm just to do that work, um.
I know we left that open for that reason.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I think just regarding, you know, the work for temporary, so really basically trying to order to execute highest scope, it's really an opportunity to really be cost-effective, to really put those in one location once and not have to relocate them, so hopefully that's part of the conversation.
Definitely part of it, and, uh, we're talking about today, um, like, do we temporarily put heat in the south wing, you know, in, for two months, and we're like, that doesn't make sense. Um, same discussions with like the barn, you know, do we temp heat that for two months? So we're, you know, really going through all those kind of discussions to make sure.
Whatever is heating the gym for the next year and a half and two years is what's going to be heating the gym for the next twenty years, you know, so.
Yeah, and these, these will be great things to talk about upon oversight as well, I think, to just let the community know that we're having those discussions and, you know, not planning to put things in that we were about, about later, same thing with the fiber that we were talking about, we were out, making sure that we're thoughtful about where we put it, you know, things like that. Um, down to the portables, so we, uh, worked really hard with Brick and the district to, uh, minimize the amount of portables we may need, right now we're looking at two orbitals for classrooms, uh, as we take down the south wing. Um, and there's actually more classes, classrooms removed, removed from the south wing than that, but we're looking at the middle school, there's a couple of classrooms there we think we can use, um, upping our efficiency, that's what they call percentage.
Oh, yeah.
Of existing classrooms.
So. Um, well, teachers won't, no teacher, I would like it, no teacher liked it. Um, unfortunately, some of our teachers are going to have to ship, have people using their classroom during that prep period, um, but for a year, you know, they'll, they'll, we've all done that, they'll be like, and they're, they're not, they're probably pushing back on that, it's just. So we're, we're going to build some, oh, I can't remember what, um, at least they call it, um, essentially some like, uh, flexible office space, so a teacher can go do their prep period in a special comfortable setting where they won't have to listen to another class, but they'll have someone who's still prepared for classes. Um, and that sounds like that's going to be inside what will be the new high school admin office, if all the class shakes out, but at this point, it's still temporary space, period, no teacher can. And you know, our library, high school library, if not currently a major circulation center, we, we don't get a lot of kids checking out books from the library. So rather than getting another portable just to be a library, um, we think we're going to have the library function more like interlibrary mode, where we'll, we'll store all our books kind of a small storage space, and then if a student requests it, someone, a runner will kind of give it. Right, so rather than needing to stand up a whole library, so.
Would it be possible for these with our public library? No, because they could, because they probably have a lot of the same.
But maybe, uh, that's not, well, that's funny you say that, we're going to be talking about the library the next board, we'll get kids' library cards. Um, right now, we are planning on having it to coordinate with the middle school library, like, so basically that two libraries turned.
Yeah, I know we have, like, Washington County has interlibrary loans, I, all the time when I work, so I think it works.
Well, we, we'll bring that agreement next, uh, next, talk about getting all of our kids a library card. Public. That would help.
Great.
Um, so in the portable schedule, we're going to attempt to, to have to either purchase or lease, come up with a plan, place them in the summer, and then to be brought online, um, I guess, this is over now, twenty twenty-five, um, so we'll be working on the permitting required for that and land use. The property line adjustment, that, that is part of the land use phase to.
Done before.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to make it seem like we're hiding something, um, there probably will be a third portable because of a bathroom.
Oh, restrooms, yeah. Um, we don't know exactly how many yet, but Brick is looking through, as we take out the south wing, um, we, we're definitely going to be short on restrooms, so, um, maybe a restroom trailer, something like that.
Especially when the locker room gets under construction.
Yeah.
Seems like that's definitely going to push us over to even here.
Yeah.
There, Dan did a, a, a rough count, is going into it, but I, I think, like, we'll see if they're.
Yeah. And we're taking out these restrooms right here, so, you know, where we place them, P and C's going to be looking at, where's the sanitary line? Or can we place it, so it's cost-effective, it's like that.
This is, this goes to why we're thinking of the base construction. Yeah, uh, because if we start spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on portable units and infrastructure to support the portable units, we're not going to get any dollars back on them.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, hopefully people haven't forgotten the fact that, that, you know, we made a promise to our contingency that we are talking about, we got some portable units, because we're wanting to utilize our dollars that efficiency and possibly could.
And keeping that north wing, uh, having the design be, so that we can keep the north wing is really huge.
Sure.
Um, I was just talking with Max, I mean, over on, uh, St. Ellen's, um, high school, we have eleven portals, and so, I mean, it can really um, get to be a huge cost, so we, we put a lot of pressure, Brian did a good job, um, at one point we're at three portables, so we are really trying to keep that as minimal as possible, because we know that's just money we don't, we don't get back. Uh, the, uh, PLA, now that's, uh, lot line adjustment, that's a process to just adjust, right now the way the lot lines are, um, we want them to be more set up so they align with our projects for the high school and the oxygen, so that's what that process is. Um, the fields will be left as kind of its own lot, and, um, when the field projects happen, there will be some other environmental assessment, things that need to happen as part of that project, so this allows us to be moving forward on our schedule. Uh, so then, uh, just into some of the larger projects, the auxiliary gym design is about an eight-month, eight-month project, um, this February through this October. Uh, it's a type-two land use process that, um, we're looking at about through July through October for that. And construction, we're looking at, um, January twenty twenty-six through August twenty twenty-six, so um, there will be some amount of time where the, the barn is gone, we don't have a new gym, but we're really trying to minimize that and have it only be in kind of the warmer months, when heat can happen outside. Uh, and the high school schedule is still pretty much where we've talked about it, it's starting now, it's about a year-long process from, uh, this February to next February, um, we are going to, um, take advantage of early, um, bait, uh, packaging, and that's the early grade and utilities down there in September, so we aren't waiting until February to um, start the work, we're going to break out some early work so we can, um, get started on on things ahead of the entire design being complete, that's one great thing about the CMGC process, is you can do that. Uh, and P and C can get that out early for us. Um, the land use there on the high school is going to be, um, September through January, about a hundred and twenty-day process. And that will be a hearing, so there will be a hearing as part of this project, uh, at Washington County. Permitting inspected review, um, next February through June, then we're going to bidding.
What is the hearing form?
Uh, for the land use, it's a type-three land use process, so, uh, they just look at what the building's going to look like, um, they have all their departments, um, review at fire department, um, things like that, get to review and comment on our, our plans. Uh, if there were any off-site work, you know, like frontage improvements, that's when the county, in this case, would say, oh, um, they will come, you know, they will end up with approval, um, always do, and, but it comes with the conditions of approval, and under those conditions, they say, you know, you need to do this, you know, and this and that, and that, you know, some projects in the past, you know, they would say you need to improve your entrance to the site, or, um, you need to do, uh, really, they, they'll get elevations of the building too, to see what it looks like, it's not a three-story building, because you can't, it's not allowed, you know, it's a two-story building, um. So things like that, and fire, fire access, uh, they want to make sure that, um, fire department gets a chance to look at it and that the fire trucks can reach everywhere they need to and things like that, so, um, it's kind of a high-level look, and we can't submit our permit documents until that, um, land use process is happening.
Okay.
So, uh.
So it's just kind of bringing everybody together in the same space at the same time, maybe for efficiency, so to look at things and then say, okay, let's move this.
Yeah, and it keeps, you know, in general, it keeps, um, it makes sure that everything that is, uh, permitted and built is per the standards, in this case of the county. And so it's their opportunity to, you know, they'll look at landscaping, I mean, they'll look at every rule, really, and maybe, you know, and then when the permit documents go in, which is, you know, when we finish our design, we'll put those in for permit, because the, the land use is happening at more like a fifty, sixty percent level of design. So they will then, um, review our permit documents and compare them against the approved land use.
Okay.
And they'll say, uh, you were supposed to, you know, prove that driveway entrance for the land use, and they make sure that's in our permit documents. So it's kind of their way to double-check all that.
Sure.
Um, yeah. And then, you know, the, the last few, uh, big things on here on the schedule are, um, the demolition of all the buildings, and that's approximately this December through, um, next March is the plan, and then construction, um, of the high school addition May twenty twenty-six through August twenty twenty-seven, we're still currently on the schedule of September first twenty twenty-seven. Occupying the.
People stay that way.
Yeah. That's right.
Before we move on to the, on the story stuff, let's just pause for questions, but.
Yeah, a lot of information. And it's similar to that bar chart we've been looking at before, it's just in a different
Right.
kind of format with some more detail.
I don't know, good, very good stuff, Mike.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have the barn until next year spring break.
Well, I, I didn't want to muddy the water, gonna get a little.
My job.
Well, no, it's, I, I hesitate even sharing this, because we like just realized today, and it's a little bit, so what Mom was talking about, about like minimizing the amount of temporary money.
Mm-hmm.
So our goal is to jettison the meat for that boiler, kind of a simple game, right? So by next winter, the high school, this area that's heated by the boiler, um, will be using something different. So if, at some point, we're going to tear down that boiler and the, the south wing, at some point it'll stop, whenever that point happens, and it, and in fact, it'd be whenever even the district office happens, the barn will no longer have heat.
Ah, okay.
So, well, we're trying, well, we're wrestling with right now, is how we can help our youth force to just schedule around that.
Mm-hmm.
So to use the latter half of their season, which is somewhere else, um, and how the P E classes can be somewhere else and less than, you know, this kind of weather. Versus, we thought we were going to temporarily heat the barn, this, we had kind of a one more fix on the boiler, it was a little risky, luckily it worked out fine, but, um, it's estimated it costs us about ten grand a month, the temporary. But um it's estimated it costs us about ten grand a month to temporarily heat the barn.
Whoa.
Um and that just, that's just a lot of money, right, should it probably be two to three months? So I don't have an answer for you right now, other than that's what we're trying to avoid, is temporarily heating it, that kind of stuff. Um but we know it's it gets used. So that, we're trying to minimize that gap where we don't have them, especially in bad weather, so um a little bit more to come.
Okay.
Um that's what.
And one of the things that um. So we'll keep through all this, it's like that feeling that everybody's starting to get, like there's going to be a little discomfort. But that discomfort is gonna last too long, so try to like settle in with that, like we're gonna be really tight for a little while. But then we're going to have something really great, and it's done.
All right, let's talk uh. Historical, yeah, preservation. As part of the this project and a lot of projects we do um go through. If there's demolition involved or or renovation on buildings that are over fifty years old. Um then we uh engage the state historic preservation office, SHPO is our acronym for that. And so we uh have a consultant on board through Brick, uh PMA or Peer. Meijer architect, um Peter and Jessica Schmidt are working on this project. And they are going to be the ones that ensure we follow the Oregon statutes. And that the project goes through all the steps needed to um go through the SHPO process.
Just to clarify as you're thinking that, cause I get stuck on this, or I got stuck on this, it's actually not only for the admin building. But the admin building, the barn, and this building, cause this building is over fifty years old, so it'll actually. Everything, John says, and we we talked about this in December a little bit, so John will see a little more specificity to that, but it's distinct of all three of them.
Yeah. And we've also got kind of a bar graph of the timeframe um. But it's written out here in word text, and there's kind of four steps that we're gonna go through, we are. Right now, working on the clearance form where we um work with PMA and team to. Put the project in front of SHPO and document kind of everything, the buildings uh. As they are now with photos, and they were out visiting the site on Monday, we had a lot going on here actually on Monday, which was great on the holiday. Um so that is um gonna go in and we expect to hear from SHPO. Uh into March, early April. And we'll determine the course of the project. We then will go to uh step to determine uh eligibility of our buildings. Um we. Believe that. Uh the building, at least the district office building would be determined eligible. Not sure on the other two.
I think they're gonna, they're gonna.
Probably.
They're probably gonna say yes, even on this building, but you know, I I was surprised when she mentioned that. Because the original roofline has not been altered. That's all, and and windows, yeah.
I would argue that the amount of moss on the roof.
I don't know if that happens, I don't know, we'll put that in the picture.
Yeah.
So it's probably all three will get a, I guess.
And I did ask about that too, because I, you know, wondered like condition, but it's more. Like Brian said, if you've altered the original design, not necessarily what's the condition of it, so that's kind of what they're looking at, and and um. Then whichever buildings are eligible, um then we. Will work with SHPO to uh determine the finding of effect that, you know. In this case, it would be demolition, and which is an adverse effect, and then you work with SHPO on a memo of. Agreement, to kind of how you will deal with that, like by um. Honoring the building, photos, or. They've they've given us a lot of examples of how, you know, things they've done in the past, create a book about.
Right, bringing. People together to pass that data, you know.
Yeah.
Mark was saying at Jefferson, they used, I don't know, the ratio of the wind, I don't know, something about some precise measurements. Keeping that ratio is the same.
You have the windows from the previous building.
All the way till I'm moving the bell, yeah, the bell down to the um.
And I think that they said that um by using some of those um. Current materials in your new design, that you're minimizing the adverse effect, so you know it's an adverse effect of finding that you're demolishing. You're minimizing the adverse effect by using some of those materials and design elements in your new.
And I'm not convinced this building, it will give the adverse effect.
Yeah.
I I'm not, I I I don't, I it just because, you know, obviously over. Doesn't have that adverse effect on the mind, I I'm not positive this building will have. Um the same requirements, I imagine the barn and the admin building for both. That'd be a mess.
And we've worked on a lot of projects where we salvage things from um buildings or. Structures or even trees that get incorporated, and you know, we've done art projects with trees that were more moral trees, that had to get demolished and. Created like, we did caterpillar art, that tree, and so uh. We utilize gym floors, you know, to build conference tables or trim, wood trim, you know, so there's just a lot of things we can do. Um salvaging apparel, definitely we talked about um.
Definitely, that would be a saving grace for our community.
Yes, so that's. Been talked about as a.
What about the floors, the wood floors, that's old growth timber.
Yeah, I mean, usually we can, uh at San Marlo High School, we took the floor and created a. Large conference room table that went in the conference room right as you walked in and had the logo in the middle of it. Um I think in some of the Gresham schools, we did wood trim um from the um. With the solid, so a lot of different things you could do, benches.
Using some of the wood out of the barn, build the benches in the new gym.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Yeah. So there's, there's a lot of opportunities, we again, kind of Ron's point, we'll balance costs, but we wanna. Create a list, talk about what those would cost, and and then, you know, determine which ones we wanna go through with and. Work with the the district and the team on that.
John, maybe it's because it was really helpful that we'd understand kind of the role of SHPO.
Um.
Oh, yeah. They're not a decision necessarily, a decision making, they can't improve our project, they're not, they're a consultant to the process.
Yeah.
I don't know if I said that correct.
Pretty much, um that that is, that is correct, and they're not a uh giving us approval or denial. They're really just uh there to consult with us, and they're doing this all the time, so they're. Um just uh put in place for us to work through the process with them and make sure, you know, that. This steps are followed, we come out with a a good plan, power and work with it, so it's. The the approval process is the land use that I talked about earlier, so that would be the only, you know. They tell us what we can and can't do, cause they approve our permits, um SHPO is more of a consulting um. Kind of organization that's gonna work with us through the process.
I guess transparency, um we have not heard this from the city directly, they have a meeting with the mayor tomorrow. Um and we're suddenly go through all the permitting required, but our historical architect, PMAPDX. Um. Kind of dug in, maybe did finally crack the code on the banks ordinance of the. Call it, not historical designation, I can't, I'm sorry, I don't remember the terminology. They have four buildings. On a list, and I'm sorry, I don't have the proper terminology.
The National Historic Register.
No, it's, this is just the video banks, but there was some. I don't wanna say confusion, I'll go where the people's mouths, there was some uncertainty on what that actually practically. And um Jessica was able, like, I don't know, it's like on page seventy one of a document for nineteen eighty nine. Um did find the reference, and it does look like it'll be uh like a type three permit. From 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 a city, so probably, um what we can imagine, the city will ask us is. To do also a city planning commission here, in addition to what we have to do in the county. A little tentative on that, I have not come from the city, they, we, I talked to Jolene a couple of times, and it was still, uh we're trying to dig into it and find out. But um Jessica told us that today, so, um like I said, whatever they ask for, they agent authentically.
Very decisions from these committees outside of this, will just affect the decisions that we've already made.
Uh which committee? The.
You mean like the planning commission?
Well, yeah, you have. Shipo, um if they come back and make recommendations that influences the design of our building.
Yeah. Doesn't sound like they can't direct us how to do it, they're just gonna work with us on it, so they won't. Give us direction that would affect what we're doing, I I guess that's a good point, is that it happens in parallel with our design schedule. Um and I think it's step, during step two, we're we're worried about the DD. Um sign development phase.
Yeah.
And then documents will support the SHPO process at that point, so it's happening in parallel, and then um. Towards, I think the end of the DDD phase, start of um construction documents is when we would choose to have the. Memorandum agreement, so that we're not done with design, we we kind of know what we.
I think it's meant to be.
Agreed to, yeah, it's collaborative, and then before we're done, we we know.
But we also have planning, uh Washington County permit. That could influence our overall cost of whatever they.
Yeah, definitely, and quite often there are, there might be a few things, we'll know. Cause before the hearing, there is a um. Uh completeness review that they will issue, and that will let us know some of the things that they plan. Um to condition us potentially with, um and then throughout the process, I mean. We luckily are hired engineers that work with the county or clean water services a lot, and so in my experience. Um they will be talking with them during the design, and uh trying to figure out like stormwater is a big one, where is the stormwater? You're gonna go, how's it gonna be treated, uh how are we gonna do stormwater detention, so usually our engineers working with them, so it's not like a big surprise. At the hearing, sometimes there are things during the hearing that could go either way, but many of the things we've kind of already know about.
Okay, and just to tell me the hurdles that we currently have.
Yeah.
Now we have the city.
Yeah, now we have a potential city hearing, so now, once we confirm that, we'll have that scheduled. Where that would go, at what time.
Oh, could influence the designs, the that are the design committees are.
Right, so that'll be key, and we'll get APS or land use consultant involved too, to make sure they are managing that whole process for us.
John, each of the design phases, we're gonna get cost second.
Yes. Yep, well, P PNC do cost estimates um at the end of schematic design, at the end of the design development. And typically at fifty percent CD, we'll confirm that, but um that's usually when we'll get the estimates to just. We never write on, they usually have to do some work to get back to budget, but that's um that's what we have to do.
And then what about the risk, uh I mentioned this in prior tariffs and steel and aluminum? And what that could possibly do to our overall like design, but it's unknown, Brick is talking about a type one construction.
Yeah. Yeah, we, um Brian brought that up, and we brought that up to PNC, and so it'll be something we're tracking as, you know, target know exactly where that's getting in right now, but.
Yeah, understood, but like.
Instead, not not instant, no, exactly, so uh I've heard about one project um right now, uh that is. Just gonna go with design for uh wood structure, um which is usually more expensive, but. Things change, so.
That would be really.
It could be.
Uh like, you wanna do something really.
Using mass timber, uh it's been like. You know, definitely more expensive than steel, depending on where uh the steel prices end up, so I think that's, I guess, one of the main things is we'll. Um with the information we have from PNC, we'll help design, you know, um influence the design to. Things that are, because it not only could affect um cost, but also availability, and so. Um it's, I think a lot of us have lived through this, cause we had this happen, you know. Five, six years ago, over tariffs, and so uh some lessons learned from that, and. And but definitely it'll be something we're tracking.
Yeah.
And that's the great thing about the estimates, uh is that we will involve subcontractors, and so. Um PNC will look, for example, steel, they'll get um a steel subcontractor to give them an estimate at the end of SD. So we're not just going on historical information, we're actually um current pricing will be factored as we go.
No, just risk to the project, right, and understanding what the risk is. Can't have we, are we are we have to respond?
Yeah. So, it'll be interesting.
All right, were there any other questions for John, John, you you got through everything?
Like so.
Brian, did you have anything on that?
No, not nothing on that on my end.
You guys have any other questions? And I think that was it for the work session, so we can go ahead and determine.
Um and you all will have your dinner uh ready for, is it down in the in cold room already? Oh. Yes, you can go back to cold room if you need a break, or these wonderful new tables here are also orderable. Whatever you want, we got a nineteen minute break.